I call to order the April 4th, 2018 Regular Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphone and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Torek, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bates, Mrs. Bolden.
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby.
Present.
Mr. Messer.
Present.
Mr. Morowski.
Present.
Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jones.
Here. Thank you. We're going to read a statement here up front. This is a little bit off course of the agenda, but we thought it was important in terms of the timing of this, and so I'd like to read a statement. "With regard to the proposed FC Cincinnati Stadium development in the West End or Oakley, the Board has stated its commitment to openness and transparency with the public. Informal discussions about a potential partnership with FC Cincinnati have continued. The Board remains committed to the terms of the resolution we passed last month, and we are willing to continue our discussion with FC Cincinnati in a transparent manner." Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Meeting, March 21st, 2018, and the Regular Business Meeting, March 21st, 2018.
Shamu.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. This morning's presentation will be about the Budget Board Budget Retreat, and I'm going to ask our superintendent to introduce the presentation.
Thank you. So, we're very excited this morning to start a budget retreat and talk about our priorities for this upcoming school year. We're already planning for next year. I will be the person who will be making the presentation, but please know that this was definitely a team effort, not only on the part of the Treasurers Department, but also the Performance Leadership Team. All the team members contributed to this presentation, and their work is embodied in the work that'll be presented this morning. I do have copies of documents if you are interested in a PowerPoint. If not...
I'll take it.
Okay. Yes. Okay, so, our budget retreat for today. We thought that, first of all, we would start off with the budget process, especially for our new members, our new board members, to understand how the budgets are developed, and then we'll get into the priorities of the district. So, first of all, when we are in the process of developing our budgets, the first thing that we do is we analyze and we identify the strategic initiatives of the district. So, we do that first. The instructional or the leadership team, professional Performance Leadership Team, we meet in the fall to identify what are the academic priorities and the priorities of the Board, and then we weave that into the budget. So, we're very intentional to make sure that the budget follows a plan and not the other way around. So, when we talk about priorities, we're talking about My Tomorrow, Vision 2020, New Schools. Those are some of the specific priorities. The next step is to develop the school budgets, and then the final skip step is to develop the Central Office Budget. So, we always want to make sure that our schools have the dollars and the resources they need to be successful. You'll continue to see this slide as we present and have seen it probably many times in the past. When we develop this process, we want to make sure that we keep equity at the focus as well as make sure that it's transparent, that it is, and we're able to help people to see all the things that we're doing as we're moving forward with our work. In terms of the school budgets, there's historical data that is captured. We actually collect three years of historical data to then develop projections for the schools. So, we identify how many students we believe the schools will have within their school. Based upon that information, then we do student-based staffing. And based upon that information, we're able to identify the salaries, the fringe benefits, overtime, home instruction. So, all of that is actually built into the budget template. And then the final phase would be the non-personnel items. Although we're very intentional in terms of the projections, in terms of the staffing, of course, we do really also consider equity, which means that there are sometimes there are special considerations that we have to make based upon a school's population, demographics, or a request from the community that doesn't quite exactly follow an exact formula. But that's the equity piece. After the budget is developed based upon the projections, then the ILT, the Instructional Leadership Team at the school, will actually then put together the rest of the budget. So, they will identify their arts classes, music, technology, library, any civil service positions that they believe that they need within their building. They make those decisions, and they also make decisions regarding non-personnel items, so how they're going to spend their dollars in terms of supplies or equipment or technology for their school. Up to 5% can be put into contingency at the school-level budget so that schools can then decide how they might need to be able to use that money. It's also probably important to know that money can be moved within the non-personnel items from one line to another if the school is seeing that they're not spending down in a certain area, but they need more dedicated money in another area. Then, after the ILT actually makes a recommendation in terms of the budget, then it goes to the LSDMC. The LSDMC is the body that actually approves the school budget. That budget then comes to Central Office, and the school will work with the Treasurers Department as well as the Assistant Superintendent to finalize their budget. We make sure that when it comes here, that we're making sure that what the school is doing is actually meeting the strategic initiatives of the district, and there also is a focus on equity. All of the budgets are then consolidated into one large budget, and at that time, the Performance Leadership Team will review that large budget as well as our committee, our Budget Commission. We will look at analytics. We will look at priorities. We will look at prioritization, and we'll also look at equity. Then, it goes public in terms of public engagement opportunities, opportunities for the public to be able to hear the contents of the budget and also to be able to give us feedback. And then the final step is that it comes to the Board for Board Approval. We must have Board Approval on a budget for the upcoming school year by June 25th. So, that's the process that's used when we develop our school budgets as well as our Central Office Budgets, starting with the strategic initiatives of the district first. So, now we get into the fun stuff. Start here, go far, journey to excellence. So, that is really our theme, and it has been our theme when we've thought about the strategic initiatives for the district. And so, when we say "start here", we mean start here in CPS as a preschooler, as a kindergartner. Start here as a parent, as a community member, as a partner, and go far with us within Cincinnati Public Schools. We are very proud of the great work that's been accomplished over the last several years when we think about our ACT scores and graduation rate and 3rd grade guarantee. But, we did not come this far only to come this far. So, you will not see a status quo or us resting on our laurels. This is about something new, different, and innovative to address the needs of our schools. This is truly a journey to excellence. Everything that you'll see regarding this presentation is really grounded in excellence. So, when we think of Cincinnati, we think of Cincinnati being identified as a place of destination. And if we consider Cincinnati a place of destination, Cincinnati Public is dead in the middle and in the center of this destination place. When we say a place of destination, there are three big ideas around Cincinnati becoming a place of destination. First and foremost, because Cincinnati Public Schools, we have safe, high-quality schools with lots of options for our parents. That's the first reason we believe we're a place of destination. Second, Cincinnati Public Schools, we produce high-school graduates who are ready for the world of work and ready for career. We believe that Cincinnati Public Schools should be considered part of the city's succession planning strategy. We have talented people to go into the world of work. And the third reason we believe that Cincinnati should be a place of destination is because Cincinnati Public offers exciting careers for talented people who want to move to this area. As we do our work, we always begin with the end in mind. So, pre-K through 12th grade is all centered around getting our kids to a place beyond graduation. Graduation alone is not enough. Upon graduation, we're looking to see that our kids are either enrolled, enlisted, employed, and we've added yet a fourth dimension, and that is endorsed, meaning that they have some type of industry credential that goes along with their career tech options. So, how will we accomplish this? So, we're going to accomplish this through equity, explicit as well as embedded equity. So, when we say "explicit", that means that we have an intentional focus on equity through our Performance Leadership Team, through our Equity Team that we've developed, as well as through our Principal Leadership. We are going to make sure that there's professional development that's offered for all levels of the organization, starting with Performance Leadership Team and our Principals, and that started this year. It will then migrate out through the rest of the organization. In addition, we will have 16 ILTs next year, really have professional development around equity, around culturally responsive practices as well. So, it's the idea of think big, start small, scale fast. We are constantly seeking to improve, pushing ourselves to be better. And in order to do that, we have to consider quality. So, we're interested in working through a strategic planning process next school year. We've heard the Board speak a couple of times regarding needing a strategic plan for the district and a process. We have identified a group that is called STUDER. They're actually nationally recognized in the world of healthcare, but they have turned their focus within the last 15 years towards education, and they are the recipient of a Malcolm Baldrick National Quality Award. Quite honestly, this is, the processes that they use are the same processes that are used by Children's Hospital. It's the same process that is being used by the Carnegie Foundation, the same processes that are being used by Menominee Falls School, which is a model for continuous improvement. This group does an outstanding job of leading districts and organizations through transformational change as well as strategic planning. So, we're actually bringing the group to the city later this month to visit. We'd like to consider them as a potential partner in helping us develop a strategic plan, and the business community is very much interested in helping to fund the STUDER group coming to Cincinnati if the Board so chooses this group. As we think about excellence and quality improvement, we felt it was very important to narrow our focus to three big areas. Academic outcomes, experiences. And when we say "experiences", we're talking about what's the student experience, what's the parent and family and community experience, and what's the employee experience? And then operational efficiencies. These are the measures that we want to hold ourselves accountable to. It's a journey, and the process is what makes it great. We want to use high-quality processes in our work to ensure that we're providing action items that lead to improved impact and return on investment for student achievement. So, we want to be able to say, for every dollar that we spend, here is the return on investment, here is the impact. And so, as we've been meeting with My Tomorrow team, we've said to them, this must be tied to your key driver diagram in terms of your initiatives for next year, and we're going to measure those initiatives. We know that when we talk about quality improvement, that there are some resources that we need in terms of professional development, materials and resources, as well as staffing. The good news is, is that we've been on this journey for a little while, and as of this school year, we have quite a few people at our Central Office who have gone through the quality improvement course through Children's Hospital. So, I've gone through it, two of the Assistant Superintendents, our HR Director, our Math Manager, and a Manager in the Department of Student Services. Children's Hospital is already saving seats for us next year, and let me just say that this is like a golden opportunity for us to be able to participate in this professional development. It's a six-month course. Children's Hospital and Strive, they come together to actually pay for that training, and it's about 7,000 per person. And CPS has not had to pay for any of that, and so our partners have come together to actually provide that support. But as you can see, by the end of next school year, we will have all of our Performance Leadership members trained, and then we'll continue to branch that out. This is all about how do we get better? How do we create a journey to true excellence? And more importantly, how do we measure it? We're interested in really diving into the key driver diagrams. I identify what's your aim, what are the drivers that you need, and then what are your interventions and your strategies? And to be able to test each intervention to identify whether we're going to adopt, adjust, or abandon. This is very different in education. We don't normally do business this way. Sometimes, quite honestly, you have a problem, you try something, you try another thing, you're not really sure if it works. We've stopped doing that. We say, here's what we want to do. We either want to drive something up, drive something down. Here are the conditions that have to be present to make that happen, and here are the strategies we're going to use. And we test each one, and we create run charts to see if what we're testing actually works. And when we have six to eight data points to say this works, then we put a pin in, and we say, okay, that's the model. Let's replicate it. So, delivering on the promise, I'll say again, we didn't come this far to only come this far. School safety. Now, I'm going to go through the major, the three big areas that I spoke with you about a couple minutes ago. School safety is the one that we start with because our parents must know, not just feel, they must know, have evidence that their kids are safe on the way to school, once they arrive at school, during school, and on the way home. And so, because of that, we've put a safety task force in place. And we started that this year before any of the shootings took place across the country. And it's made up, as you can see, Cincinnati Public Schools administrators, the Federation of Teachers, the Police Department, FBI was there, Homeland Security and the Fire Department. And they have all committed to staying with us to ensure that our schools are safe and putting measures in place. Our security team is working on a comprehensive safety plan. So, CPS, when our staff attend conferences across the country on safety, a lot of times Cincinnati is recognized as a leader. I will say again, though, we need to go further. We need to never arrive at the destination. We are always trying to improve our practice. And so, we believe that this work is important for us to continue. We would like to be able to add a Manager Position to really focus on culture at each of our schools from the district perspective to ensure that we have a safe climate for all of our kids, that our kids' needs are being met social and emotionally. And so, we believe in order to do that work, we need a position to really focus on that. We would also join that person with a School Social Worker that we already have in place who's working on the bullying. We would combine those two positions or those two people together into a small department. High-quality schools. So, thinking about high-quality schools, you know, this year we opened Carthage to increase our capacity in terms of enrolling kids. We anticipate being able to add to that school next year so to be able to grow some additional classrooms. Vision 2020. We'll be expanding Vision 2020 1.0 and 2.0. So, those schools are in their second and third year of implementation for next school year. Again, Vision 2020 is about embedded equity. It was all about equity when the community came to the Board and came to us and said, this is great what you're doing with My Tomorrow for our high schools, but what about our neighborhood elementary schools? Why should I have to leave my community in order to get a magnet-like program? And you all said you're absolutely right, and Vision 2020 was born, and it's about equity. Next year, we'll be bringing an additional six schools online. You can see those schools right now. We're currently working on the budgets and the funding to support year one of those schools. So, it's important to know that when we launch Vision 2020 1.0 and 2.0, there are reoccurring costs as we continue to grow that, and then there are also new costs. And then there are new costs as we bring 3.0 on. Thinking of equity and also our enrollment growing, we opened LEAP last year, and who would have thought that it has 220 students, pre-K through 3rd grade? So, that has been a success. We're going to add 4th grade next year, and we're going to continue to grow that school. Spencer was all about equity. It was brought to our attention that there are many kids, especially a lot of minority kids, who fall just under the gifted range, and they are very smart and they're gifted. They don't necessarily have the foundational literacy skills, and if they had that extra help and push, they would be able to be identified as gifted, and so Spencer was born. And so, we have a very diverse school made up of kids who are gifted and those who fall just below. They're exceptional students. Next year, we're going to be adding 9th grade to Spencer, so we're growing that. Again, this is embedded equity. So, what's on the horizon? Due to our increasing enrollment, we're going to be opening Clifton School next year. And we actually have a meeting. So, we've had staff who've been working with the Cairns community all school year. We have a meeting next week to further our conversations. When we also think about the west side, we know that it is booming with population on the west side, and so we need to be able to alleviate the overcrowdedness on the west side. And so, we're looking at potentially a pre-K through 12 Montessori school on the west side. We're also considering a possible high-school campus on the west side that would include a very rich career and workforce readiness component and focus. So, so many times people say, what about those vocational ed courses? What happened to those? And those are our career tech. What about the Oaks? How come we don't go there? But it's far out for our kids to get there. And so, what if we had something like that right within Cincinnati Public Schools and a campus that would allow that rich opportunity to take place? We're also looking for, on that campus, to have what are called XQ schools. So, there's a movement across the nation to reimagine high schools, and believe it or not, Hollywood is leading the charge on this. And so, you have Tom Hanks and Viola Davis, who did this huge XQ program last year that was televised. It was all led by students about a new brand of high school to really address what our kids need to learn and how they need to learn. And so, we're looking at that as well. So, again, we want to make sure we are constantly progressing, constantly continuously improving. My Tomorrow, embedded equity. So, whenever you think of My Tomorrow, we automatically think of enroll, enlist, employ, and now endorse. And when we think of equity, we're making sure that our schools all have a seven-bell day next year. Our Principals and staffs are working on those schedules right now. I was with the Principal this morning who's working on his schedule. We're also making sure that there are seven hours of instructional time for our students. We recognize, quite honestly, that there are some inequities when we look at our high schools. When we look at, I'm going to be honest with you, we benchmark against Walnut Hills High School. And the reason we do is because we want to make sure that all of our kids, whether I'm at Woodward or Aiken or Withrow, that they have the advantages that the Walnut Hills kids have, and the academic rigor is a piece that we don't yet see across all of our high schools. And so, we would like to have five Assistant Principals who would have a specific focus on instruction and instruction only and would work with our title high schools. We also believe that it is necessary for us to have a full-time released Principal Coach to quite honestly get some things on track and move the work in terms of academic achievement in those schools. We're talking about improving our ACT scores, improving our graduation rates, improving AP. Again, equity in terms of college readiness. This year, we brought on a college manager at the Central Office level who could really coordinate college acceptance across all of our schools to add some equity to make sure that all kids are getting what they need, not just the Walnut Hills kids. We started this year a university consortium where we brought all the universities together, and instead of them telling us what they were going to do, we told them, here's our vision, and here's what we want you to do to help our kids get into school. We also have done a lot of college matching with our universities and our kids to say this. We look at their graduation rates, and quite honestly, if a university isn't, doesn't have a high graduation rate for students who look like our students, we aren't telling our kids to go to those schools. We're telling them to go to schools that actually have the wraparound services that will help them be successful. We believe we need to add some additional resources to this to really make sure that all of our kids have access to college if that's what they want to do. Employment. So, we've, in the past, talked a lot about career-based learning, and we've taken a bit of a pivot to career-based learning and employment. We want to make sure that those kids who are going into the world of work, that they are able to make a decent living so they can take care of themselves and take care of their families, not go into these inter-level jobs and stay there. We believe we need some additional resources around employment. Again, what we're doing is we're lining up our money to support enroll, endorse, enlist, and employment. It's the end in mind. So, I've passed out this document, and I've given you a copy of this so that you can see it because it's a little hard to see on the screen. But our career awareness actually begins at 3rd grade, and then you can see that the exposure starts at 6th through 8th grade. And then we do a lot of readiness at 9th through 12th, and then at 12th grade is where the employment begins. So, we have to make sure that we are fresh, young, and up-to-date with our young people on how they want to receive information. And so, we've created videos that are called Money Making Mondays to give kids information about employment opportunities throughout the city. So, every two weeks, we push out a YouTube video that talks about Money Making Mondays, and we'll show you a little preview.
Hi, guys. My name is Brittany Cousins, and I'm your Career-Based Learning Manager and Employment Manager here at the district. I'm excited to bring to you a new opportunity for our district staff to connect to you and to bring you wonderful experiences that you can take advantage of. We know that a lot of our favorite celebrities and our musical artists are hashtagging Money Making Mondays, so why not bring that to the district? I'm the Employment Manager, so I am excited to bring different job opportunities, internship opportunities, and even some amazing job shadowing opportunities to you in order for you to take advantage of them. So, every other Monday, I'll be coming to you with the Money Making Mondays, and we will make sure that you are connected to the resources in our community. If you look at the link below, you'll be able to start exploring all the opportunities and get all of the links necessary for you to apply. Stay tuned.
So, again, we want to push our information to our kids because equity says that they have access and they have opportunity. have access and they have opportunity if they don't know it exists and they don't have We are also developing college videos that are very similar to that, where we have our college manager who will be pushing out videos about applying for college, about fast, thus scholarship opportunities. So, again, we want to hit our kids in a lot of different ways. We want to talk to them through their principals, through their teachers, through social media, through videos, through hashtag, through their counselors. So, we're trying to push it out. We're trying to inundate them with the information, so there should be absolutely no excuse or no reason why they don't have the access and the opportunity that they deserve. So, when you look at this diagram, what it shows is that we started our college and our career groups, and this year, we started some scholar programs across our schools. We started some pipeline programs, IT pipeline, logistics pipeline, cybersecurity pipeline, and you can see we are moving fast, because our kids need this information, and they need it now. Here's our plan to continue to move forward in terms of our employment pipeline. So, we have pipelines of kids who are going to college. Now, these are pipelines of kids who are going into the world of work. So, this year, we started two, a logistics one and a cybersecurity one, and then you can see that we're gonna keep those going next year, but you can see which ones we're adding in 1819 and then 1920. And we've identified these specific ones through our work with the Chamber in terms of these are areas of profession where there are many jobs that are going unfilled across the city or in the region. And we'd like to show you our DHL Logistics, our first proof of concept and the launch of that initiative.
There's not a lot of other programs or organizations out there that are really doing anything like this. The supply chain logistics industry in this area alone is just booming. There are a lot more jobs than there are people to do those jobs. I think that this is a great opportunity for the students to see what's out there and for us to really benefit from their talents and their skills. And hopefully, they'll decide to come and work for us and really experience the logistics industry and take advantage of our tuition reimbursement and see what career opportunities are out there.
I think it's gonna give me the experience I need, because most jobs nowadays are like, "You need experience." If you go into it with the experience already, you're gonna be one step ahead of the game.
This partnership is delivering on the promise of My Tomorrow of getting our young people ready for the world of work, but not just to go into the world of work, but to be able to make a decent living, to take care of yourself, and take care of your families. So, I don't know about you all, but I am like super excited, almost to the point of tears, when I see our kids. This is Cincinnati Public Schools. So, again, I will say, we have come too far to only go this far. We are on the cusp of doing so many great things in our district and for our city, and I just, I'm just like thrilled to death and couldn't be happier and more honored than to work with a team of staff members, of administrators, and teachers who make all this happen. So, just a kudos out to the team. Cybersecurity, I know, it's very exciting. I know, we should clap for that video. It's real, it's happening. We're gonna do a cybersecurity video soon. So, Sarah launched a cybersecurity academy this year. This is like groundbreaking stuff for us. Last year, Board Member Bolton brought Bell Can to the table, and Sarah worked with Bell Can over a year to develop a cybersecurity program academy that launched this year at Taft IT with a group of sophomores. It's two and a half years, they will go through two and a half years. Bell Can is paying the $8,000 per kid to go through this training. Once the kids graduate, then the students, if they have done well, will be offered a full-time job at Bell Can making $60,000. Those are the types of partnerships that we're striking. And so, when I say Cincinnati can be a place of destination, it's true. It is a place of destination. My Tomorrow in Technology, again, this is all about equity, making sure that our kids have access to the technologies that they need, the hardware as well as the software, as well as the internet and Wi-Fi. So, we're continuing our My Tomorrow technology work. Oops, I went a little too fast. And then, we have our extracurricular activities, not just sports, but we know that this is vitally important to our students, and so, we're expanding our extracurricular activities. So, everything that I'm laying out, these are the big new initiatives that we want funded, and this is just laying out the plan for you. We know that we cannot do any of this work without the staff in place to do it and a highly qualified and talented staff. We firmly believe that all people deserve interesting careers and exciting assignments, and that's what we want to do. That's about the employee experience. So, Susan Bunty launched this year the Talent Development Division, which she will be expanding. It will have a major focus next year to focus on leadership, central office, principals, assistant principal, teacher, leadership, and then we're going to continue to build out that work. Again, it's about seeking improvement and excellence. So, you can see how we've planned to build out the work over years. Think big, start small, scale fast, starting with leadership, teachers. We're looking at recruitment, selection, and more, most importantly, we're also looking at succession planning. How do we get people ready to be the next leaders or the next teachers? So, we have a plan. Through all of this, we have a plan in terms of how to work, how to move this work forward. And you can see, it starts with training and development and engagement and recruiting and onboarding and performance management. And I'm not gonna go too much detail, because I don't want to steal Susan's thunder, because she will be doing a comprehensive presentation for you soon. It's important, though, for me to pause here, because we need to get into the habit of rewarding and awarding our employees, and that's something that we're going to be doing. So, we're quite honestly, we're looking at a model of a lot of the major Fortune 500 companies. What do these people do? How do they get people to want to come and work for them and stay with them? Susan launched this year Luncheon Learns here at the Ed Center. So, we're doing some of these things that set us apart and will hopefully make our district a place where people want to be. This all builds on the great work that Paul has been doing in terms of recruitment and staffing within the HR department. Paul and Susan have been working very closely together. Paul has launched a series of fairs for paraprofessionals, for teachers, and will continue that work next year, so we're very excited about that. Uh-oh, I went a little bit too far. You know, we have a major focus on recruiting people, because we want to bring the best and the brightest to Cincinnati, and we have to make sure that we have these great opportunities to offer them once they get here. We're looking at different assessments that we can use in terms of pre-employment. Again, we've got this from the business community. The CRBC suggested this instrument, and Paul, the divine instrument, was able to look into it. And so, again, we're bringing some resources and ideas from healthcare, from the business world, those best practices that will help us be the very best that we can be. Engagement. We've come too far to only come this far. So, we've heard the board loudly and clearly in terms of making sure that our communication is timely, it's in multiple ways, and it's also engaging and conveys a message that wants or invites people to enroll into the district, not just enroll in terms of their students to be a part of. So, Lauren will be working very hard. She has already been working really hard to really work on our storylines and our pitches and how we get the good news out about Cincinnati Public. She's also gonna be really working with her team to reimagine the CLCs, which are a major part of her work, because you know, under Lauren's shop, we now have three groups that have come together. We have communications, we have customer help, which we believe will be called customer care, like we'll have employee care. And she also has the face group that have all come in together. And so, she's working to reimagine what does communication and what will engagement look like? Again, this is all about seeking excellence, creating a place at the table for our community members, inviting them to be a part of what we're doing and to inform our work, to make sure that we're using our funding in a strategic way and bringing our funders together to support the good work that they are doing within our schools. And then, again, we want to make sure that we're using lots of form of media to get the message out, whether it's YouTube. So, we have a YouTube presence, so please, 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 go on your phones, like our YouTube videos. We need more likes, we need followers, subscribe to our YouTube channel, watch Brittany talk about Money Making Mondays. Kayla, I'm not sure what hers will be called, but it's Kayla something in college. So, we have a city cable access channel now. We're going to be putting in a very, very small, economically very, very small, not a big cost, little studio here, so we can produce really great videos to push them out for our kids, and we'll invite our kids in to come in and create some videos to push them out. So, we want to be on the cutting edge. We want to be in a place where people are able to consume the information very quickly, but also to be able to respond to us. Earlier this year, Sarah launched something called Thought Exchange, and so, we're going to continue Thought Exchange, where an idea can be posted, and then you can go on and you can give your thoughts about it, and you can put stars by it, and then the data will bubble up to tell you, here are the five ideas that came up to the top that most people from around the country, around the district, around the city thought were important. In addition, we want to make sure that when you enroll in CPS, it is a comfortable and very easy process. And so, we want to have employment hubs in the district, and so, that's something new. But we need the personnel to be able to staff those hubs, so it's central enrollment, but through these employment or enrollment hubs. So, that's a new cost and a new part of our vision for next school year. I think I've covered all those things just really quickly. The message is, we are only getting started, this is only the beginning. So, let's talk about the dollars. So, these are the new strategic investments that we anticipate making with the board's approval next year. You will not see every single thing, but you will see the major things that I covered within the presentation from the Quality Improvement Manager, because we believe everything has to be grounded and rooted in excellence and quality improvement, to safety, to career tech, to the seven-bell day, to additional companion classes to make sure our kids graduate, to curriculum programming, to the assistant principal of instruction, to paraprofessionals for operations. Again, all of these things are about equity, also involving communication. We want to engage people in a significantly different way and hold them as captive audiences to inform our work and to be a part of it. So, these are new costs. It's also very important to remember that those are new costs, but we have multi-year initiatives that continue to go. So, we have My Tomorrow, we have all the components of My Tomorrow, and then we have Vision 2020 1.2.0 and 3.0, as well as talent development. So, you can see all the ongoing costs that are associated with those specific initiatives. It would be remiss of us not to also mention, quite honestly, some things that are budget drivers in terms of, we know that we have a raise in salaries that have been negotiated to the tune of $4.5 million. We also know that our federal funds have been shrinking, and so, there are some things that we have been funding through federal dollars that will now need to come to the general fund. And we're also very mindful of those things that are contractual, like the ESL teacher and that expansion, which is contractual, which we know needs to be a part of this budget as well. So, as I mentioned, we do have shrinking funds in terms of federal dollars. We're not sure exactly what the loss will look like for next school year, but we can anticipate what we think will happen. What's really important, though, is whether or not these funds are available in terms of the federal dollars. We believe these are the things that we need to fund for our kids. So, we're not saying, "Well, here's the pot of money, let's see what we can do." We're saying, "Here's what we need to do for our kids, and let's figure out how we're going to fund it and what funding sources we're going to use." So, that concludes our initiative presentation on the budget, but we wanted to make sure, quite honestly, the majority of this, it's about the academic and the enrichment and the initiative of our kids. It's about putting our money to support our core business, which is teaching and learning, pre-K through 12, getting our kids to a place beyond Cincinnati Public Schools. Thank you. And if there are questions, the team will come up to the mic and join to help answer any questions that you might have. I'm sure there are questions and comments from board members. I'm sure.
Well, I'll start. Thank you. That was as much education as it was presentation, so thank you for that. And as this is my first official budgeting process, I probably have far more questions than maybe what would be appropriate for here. So, I think the statement that I'll make is, I think this was fantastic work and is exciting, all of the pieces. I think my comment to our board is, it calls out the need for our board to have a clearly-defined strategic plan to say where this board sees this district over the next 10 to 20 years, and then maybe a five-year marker, so that the work that's done in this plan ladders directly to what is probably a really heavy lift to figure out where this district will be in 20 years or 10 years. So, I think in absence of that, this is really great work. A couple of the things that, just again, understanding the process, is how are our employees engaged in the development of the proposed solutions to identified needs or problems of the district? I think that would be interesting for me to figure out how that then rolls into what is then created here. And then, I'd also be curious, as we're often asked in my day job, as you're going through your budget, is what are your incremental expenses? And then, what do you anticipate doing more efficiently? Where do you see reductions, opportunities for synergies or efficiencies, I guess is a good enough word there? But I think probably it's a deeper conversation on the litany of other items here, just understanding a little bit more of the specific details. I do really, really love all of the career readiness training, and I love that we're doubling down in that space, because, let's be clear, there's a national average of how many children are likely to go to college. And every day, I think it was in, was it New York Times or something, just even over the weekend, questioning even, does it even matter which school and whether you go to school at all? Will that ultimately impact your long-term success in life? So, I think it's great for us to create those opportunities for students who may choose another path than college, and I commend you for all of that work.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I think this is a great, more than a beginning. Of course, it's always important to remind the administration, this is only a proposal, an extensive one, of course, because the community has to occasionally chime in, and we do too. And I'm particularly pleased and almost want to call Susan Cranley about the seven-day, the seven-hour high school day and also the seven-bell high school. and also the seven bell high school day. That's one of the big equity issues that's been confronting us. And I know we've counted minutes for 11 years. So this is, that's very good. And I'm also excited, as an old high school teacher, that thinking about reshaping the high school structure is a good idea. I'm particularly interested in the API where we start to have assistant principals who are particularly good in curriculum and instruction. I think that's good. I'd also suggest, that's the only way you're going to get the kind of rigor that you're going to need for the equitable system. The other piece of that is something that you alluded to, and I don't know if it has a title yet, but just as much as we need a college career kind of person somehow almost at every site, but certainly over the district, we also probably have, start to need a career and employment placement officer at many of our high schools. And I think that that's something that could be very useful. Anything we can do that the smaller systems don't have the capacity to do makes us more competitive. And it also deals with our kids getting more ready, because we have to do more to get them more ready to be competitive. Of course, and I say this all the time, even our staffing equation is anti-equitable or equity, because it's on equality instead of what I think it should be. To Mr. Messer's point, the strategic planning piece and also the review of the CLCs or whatever, that's something that the board needs to be participating in as the wonderful list of some possible new schools or new concepts for schools. Those are things the board will probably want to chime in on. And there needs to be, to Vice President Copeland Dansby's point, probably some community engagement before we start imposing certain schools on certain people. But lots of good stuff. There is something that comes from an effort by the SAC, by the Student Achievement Committee, about the arts classes, where we have limited or none in some of our schools. And that was great work done by the administration. And I know it was like a cost of $175,000 or something, but it'd be great to see where that is in the pipeline. I didn't see any reference to A to E, A to S, but I know there's some talk about finding a better way to serve those children. You know me, my bugaboo all the time is focusing on the sites. I mean, I have a number of other stuff to say, but on all the stuff about talent development, not to be negative, but I didn't see any references to evaluation and how we begin to think in terms of having people that shouldn't be here, find a way to make sure that they have an exit system. So that has to be part of it or we're not going to be real. And I have a bunch of other stuff. But I think this is a great, great, great start and a good overview for us. And of course, we have lists and lists of things the board probably wants to see in the budget too. But we'll save that for a little bit later in writing. But this has been very helpful. Do you kind of find an evaluation piece here for me?
It's under performance management.
Yeah.
It doesn't say specifically evaluation, but that's what we mean when we say performance management.
And one of my hopes for that is what was always promised when we did the new evaluation system, even from the state, was the capacity to have individualized evaluation and individualized professional development based upon staff members' actual evaluations. So that, if that's going to be all part of a piece, I'd just like to have that be more explicit and explained.
So as we're looking at the evaluation piece and performance management, we're looking at competencies, things that can be demonstrated and evidence-based to say that you've mastered these specific competencies. So that's a part of the evaluation. And then there's a professional growth plan that would be tied to the competencies that a person wants to improve upon.
And that would be great. And when there's no growth, then it's exit.
Thank you. Mr. Timmons?
Yes. I was really excited, you know, me being a retired teacher and being out at Woodward High School and seeing how the career tech program really helped our kids with the hands-on experience and then get out in the work world. I think they get a head start, you know, for some of the people, matter of fact, adults out here that's really, you know, looking for work. And also, I was excited about the rewards, you know, that you were talking about. Teachers, you know, they work their tail off. And a lot of times, they don't, they, believe me, they want a pat on the back, even though they act like they don't or whatever. But everybody want to be recognized when they doing something positive. And I think that's good too, to, you know, to be able to get some more awards and keep them fired up, excited about what they're doing. But I thought that was good.
Thank you. Mr. Maraski?
So I have a lot of questions too that I'll save, most of them. And like Ms. Bolton was saying, I'm sure we all have things that we want to see. But I think this is really great. I commend the team for putting in all the work. A few things that I'm exceptionally happy about, and I think you know this and most everybody does, that DHL and cybersecurity pipeline is amazing. Haven't been a part of workforce development for at least 15 years or so. One of the biggest hangups, of course, is we can workforce develop really, really well. Getting people hired isn't, we're not always good at it. And CPS, in my opinion, is beating a lot of local workforce training initiatives in that there is something at the end of it. And so that's really great. And I'm excited to see what comes next year too and the year after that. So I'm interested to learn more about that. I also, having been an assistant principal, think it's great that we're going to be able to provide more assistant principals to the schools. And again, to echo Ms. Bolton, that's the only way we're going to guarantee assuredly that rigor. And also thrilled to see that you are going to be over at Cincinnati Children's, my new employer. I'm biased, but they do great work with their employees. And then lastly, just a couple of things. The teacher training, I think, is great to see that there are going to be more dollars advocated, allocated to that. And to echo Mr. Messer, and he was talking, I think, more broadly regarding the employees and their input in this. I know that in student achievement, we've been having conversations about sort of teacher-led input on what kinds of things they want to see in the in-service. So I'd love to continue talking about that and making sure we're providing the instruction teachers actually want and need. And then also maybe some separate things for the Montessori schools that are saying, you know, we want to have our own, you know, curriculum for our in-services that speak more to what we're doing in our schools. And then lastly, for the A to E and A to S, there's been some neat conversation, again, in student achievement regarding some initiatives to be able to help kids that may be having a tougher time getting re-acclimated back into school. And so as these conversations go on, I just wanted to make note that I want to keep that at the forefront as well as how we're actually working with kids to make sure they have what they need to come back to school. Or if they're in A to E, A to S, what do they need there so that they can stay on top of their game? So all in all, this was awesome. I really appreciate you taking the time to do it and for presenting to us. And thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland Dansby?
Thank you, Superintendent. What amazing information. It's especially exciting for me. This is probably the fifth official finance and budget presentation. And I'm so glad to hear some things that are very, very important to me. First of all, equity and opportunity for access for every child in every school. So when we talk about what's happening with our Vision 2020 1.0, 2.0, 3.0, and the intentional focus on our neighborhood schools. So I'm glad that we haven't lost that. I'd like to hear more about how we're tailoring that for schools. Not right now, but as we move forward. The other, number two, the robust professional development. And I'd like to hear more about how it is indeed tailored to what our professionals need in their environment and their climate and not a blanket, you know, professional development curriculum or that. Number three, using our partnerships. We are so rich with partnerships here in our area. And to see the videos and to hear how we're really making use of our Fortune 500 companies and other companies that have the resources to give to our students and not only helping to prepare them, but to employ them. And so those three things being critically important to me as I stood as a candidate for school board and to see these things actually implemented in the core of what we're doing, I want to stand on top of this table, like you would like, you know. So very important to me, yes. Oh, she's like, go ahead. Okay, great. The other thing, you know, as we transition through these roles and our disciples, if you will, for the community, hearing the support to customer help is extremely important. So we'll ask more questions about that too. And I've been an advocate for many years in giving more literal financial support to our communications department. We've got a great story to tell and there are so many innovative ways to do that now, and it costs money. So I see on your list, though, it's still to be determined. So I'll be interested in, you know, how we get there. I'm also mostly interested in understanding where our mental health supports are for our students. Is that involved with school safety or exactly where does that lie? And I think that might then branch off into some discipline support and/or A to E, A to S. So seeing that come to life with more specifics there. And also mental health component with our community learning centers. I didn't hear that, but I'm sure you all have thought of that. So I also want to encourage my colleagues to my left and my right to make some hard decisions about some committee work related to our board strategic plan. And I think we would be good to do that in a hurry rather than later so that the administration doesn't get ahead of the board and that we are definitely aligned. So kudos to you and your amazing team and please continue the great work. I don't know how, but maybe I'll make an assignment later as to how we go into our next step so we can dig a little deeper and get all of our questions answered. Thank you so much.
Just in closing, I want to first congratulate you and the team as well. And I won't ditto what everybody else has said, says. There are some things that I too personally either didn't see or don't quite understand and need more information about. But the one thing that I will say, because this, the budget, what I've seen it is not, it is a budget retreat plan, but it really is through the lens of equity. And that's certainly what I saw today. And I think that with anything that we ask, well, let me back up first and say, I've seen a great deal of process since I first came on board a few years ago. And so that's worthy of acknowledging the progress that we've seen. And you said something, and you say it all the time in different ways, but I hear it all the time, about the transformation that the district needs to undergo. And you said it today, that in order to become equitable and through the lens of equity and become culturally competent, it's an evolving process. And if we ever get there, we're doing something wrong. So changes are made constantly. So I too congratulate you and the team and look forward to hearing more in terms of the sort of the details that people outlined here. And I too have a few concerns that I'll share at that point. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to the team.
Okay. So does anyone have any kudos? All right, hearing none. I'm going to ask Mr. Messer to please present the retirements.
So today, we would like to celebrate the service of Annie Mae Glover, a paraprofessional who will retire on June the 1st, and thank Annie Mae for her service to CPS.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. And Mrs. Twarick will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. So today, we have five speakers. And I'm going to call the first three and then the next, the last two. Marcia Reese, she left? Sorry. Oh, she's in, okay. Well, we'll come back when she comes back. Okay, Ernestine Hill, Stanford Pool. We'll start with those two. And when Ms. Reese comes back, we'll get her up here.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Ernestine Hill. I am a resident of City West. FC is going to, they're talking about bringing the stadium to the West End. I've spoke before. This is not the first time that I've been in a situation where I've been asked to move because of development. And it first started in Detroit, Michigan. I got a slap in the face, $50 voucher, and two weeks to get off their property. I come to Cincinnati, I'm faced with the same situation where Hope Six showed up and they tore down the lower homes in the Lincoln Courts. Now, I'm the same situation. I'm worried about if I'm going to have somewhere to stay. Because I know that if it do come, I'm going to end up having to leave. It's not the people that is trying to get it there, it's the people that's going to come behind them. I'm afraid. I'm 60 years old and I'm tired. Sent out the letter to you board members, you've probably gotten it. And we had a meeting that was uncalled for. It wasn't done in order. I feel like it was a lot of shenanigans going on with the letter. A CBA takes a long time to put together. And I know you can't do it in two hours or two days. And that's what we was forced with by Mr. Keith Blake. He's the president of the West End Council. I don't know what to do at this point, but I know I'm tired. And I know it's all about money. And people do not take people into consideration when that kind of money is involved. I'm asking you to please say no. I do not want this in my front yard, because I know I'm going to have to move. And I'm running out of places to go. So please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I want to talk quick. 50 years ago, Martin Luther King lost his life fighting for people, fighting for low wages. They said, no. West End said it's no to you voting, said no to you in this chamber, City Council, and still not paying attention. Ms. Wagner said something about safety in the schools. The shootings are all over the states and that. TAF is the only minority high school in the West End. I went to TAF, police station District 1 and next door to protect that school. Been there ever since with the Thuesen. I can't understand why you want to take their six-year stadium, tear it up, and put another entity from out of the neighborhood and protect them and take your kids that the parents voted for y'all to make the good decision to protect the kids and take their kids several blocks away where they don't have the protection. If FC want to build a play, let them play another spot down there. The Board of Education pulled to protect our kids. We voted, the kids don't vote, the parents do. And so people are going to remember this stuff if you don't listen to the voters that say they don't want it. Next thing I'm looking at is the city of Cincinnati was a couple of years ago, the Bengals... Bengals, one of the entities, made a deal with the Bengals. Hammond County said that they made a fool out of them, made a fool out of City Council. Now, the board want to add to that. They, Banning or whatever his name, he was the one that made that deal. And you give him the keys to the car again. How many times do we have to do this stuff? Hammond County said they were fooled, the taxpayers were fooled. And we want to turn around because they got some money and hand it to them. Don't make sense. Hope you get some sense here.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My heart is full right now. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. As a parent, a grandparent, aunt, cousin, it was beautiful. But then, when you balance out what I'm getting ready to say, if one baby lose their housing, all that's not worth it. It's a balancing act. I do not envy you guys your job. This is a letter. Please take time to read it and understand where we're coming from. We don't want a stadium in the West End. Common sense tells us that we're gonna lose our housing. You cannot take a 5,000-seat stadium and put a 30,000-seat there, and nobody's gonna lose housing. Come on. Come on. Hear what we saying. When do we start to matter? When do we? We said, "No." We said, "No." So when do we start to matter? You say that you're for the kids. What about our kids? What about our kids in the West End? We're not stupid. We know we're gonna lose housing. I may be one to lose mine. Born and raised in the West End. Lived a little bit up everywhere. Don't want to have to move. Want to go. I need for you guys to understand. I know you balancing, but it's unfair to us. When will you listen to what we say, what we want? Hear us and hear us good. We don't want a stadium. We don't. What would you guys have done if the offer of this stadium had not come to the West End? You'd have found the money in. Find it now. Don't put my household or the people that I represent household in jeopardy. None of you live down there. None of you. None of your kids go to Taft, go to Hays. None of them. Hear what we saying, and please hear us heartily. We don't want that stadium at our community. I'm gonna share this one last story, and I'm trying to keep it within you guys' bylaws. A couple of years ago, the mayor now told me to my face that the color of my skin, because of the color of my skin, he didn't want me in his neighborhood. I've lived with that for years. Now, coming forward, it's like, not only is the city, but you guys gonna force down our throats a stadium that we don't want. So again, is it because of the color of my skin?
Thank you. Our final two speakers are Josh Springs and finally Julie Sellers.
Josh Spring, Executive Director of the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition. I hope that the letter that Ms. Marcia referred to, and I think each of you have copies of, that you do take the time to read it. And to please notice that the signers of this letter are Marcia Reese, who represents Liberty Street Apartments, Cantina Davis from Liberty Street, Luana, Oglesby from Stanley Row, Shirley Colbert from City West, and the list goes on. These are presidents of these resident associations, and together, they represent over 1,000 households. That's about 4,000 people in the West End. That's more than half of the entire population of that neighborhood represented by these signers. And so this is important. And the only reason the number isn't higher is because we didn't have time to get the signatures from the folks over at Park Town and Richmond Village. That would have put it up by another 1,500 people represented. So please do take notice of that. And please also note that whatever CBA may or may not have been put in front of you or draft, it's impossible for there to be a legitimate CBA right now because the community council hasn't voted on one. In fact, the community council voted to only be a part of such a process if the stadium is forced. And so it's a logical fallacy to say that there could be one now. And then finally, if one is brought, who gets to say that it's from the community? The only formal way in our city, the way we do things here, is for it to come from the community council. And so I think it's important for this body to say, "We'll accept something that comes from a vote of the community council," so that it's democratic. Just a couple numbers. So $2 million annually for schools. I think that it costs about $10,000 per CPS student each year. That accounts, $2 million funds about 200 students. When I look at the last 15 years in Over the Rhine, 2,300 housing units have been lost. And you have to think how many of those had kids that were displaced. It costs between $6,000 and $7,000 annually to shelter a family with kids, an average family with kids. And so if just 327 families, remember, it was 2,300 in Over the Rhine. If just 327 families lose their housing because of what comes after this shelter, that $2 million in an aggregate sense is already spent. Not, that's just money, not considering what it does to those kids' lives and how that affects the classrooms that they sit in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to not, or the, to talk a little bit about the difference. I was a little bit about, not about the FCC so much, but about the budget process. I was very confused by the presentation that we saw today of the budget process because it sounded as if we were giving schools more say in their staffing and how their money is spent. And as far as I am aware, that didn't happen this year. And this year, the schools, and I don't know if it's because of this budget process, but it was never communicated to us or the Budget Commission or to schools or teachers or ILTs, that this year, the schools' budgets were two to three months behind getting their budgets and staffing sheets. Schools were given very little input into the process. There were schools who had enrollment numbers that were inaccurate, and they were thinking that they had to surplus two teachers out of their school, and they could not figure out how to staff their schools properly at some of the schools. There was not very much input in how this was going to be done. But we are just now getting the budgets, and we just finished the first posting of the rounds. We haven't even gotten into the part for early hiring because the budget process was so far behind. And in more than 10 years that I've been working on the process, our goal was always to try to have the process done as early as possible so we could begin outside hiring. This year, it has been so complicated, and there were so many taking it back and pushing back the process that we haven't even started doing any outside hiring yet, which to me seems kind of contradictory to what we're trying to do. And it's always driven by that budget process. We need to remember that schools are not in the business of making soap or cars. We are in the business of educating children, and we need to know what is our staffing going to look like next year so that we can eliminate overloaded classrooms and combination classrooms and have the basics of what is necessary for a good education before we start putting fluff on top of it. I was talking to some of the teachers who work at Children's Hospital, and they were talking about the culture of childrens and that they have recently started on using a model, and they, it's called the Toyota Way Model, and it's a business model of a car manufacturer. I hope that's not the process that we're using for children in our district. We know the model is not really working for childrens, or is it working for childrens? But will it work for children in CPS? We have to have structures in place that are going to be effective so that we can do the work that we need to do without harming the morale of the staff that we do have. As I've talked to teachers, we still have classrooms that are going to be overloaded. There's combination classrooms. When I take it to the treasurer, they say, "Oh, no, I don't know what you're talking about. They're gonna be fine." But when you look at the projections for the numbers next year compared to what they are this year, there are 30 and 40 students under enrollment. So then, next year, at the beginning of the year, their kids are going to be in overloaded classrooms, and it will take the whole year for that to happen. This does not represent equity. I'm sorry. That's number one on equity, is making sure that the children that are in classrooms in this district are in classrooms like you want your child in. The CPS is making decisions that are, the people who are making these decisions are too far removed from their frontline work, and most of them have never worked in a school to understand what it takes for a school to operate. There has been too little input from teachers who are actually doing the work. And teachers in CFT want to be more involved with the decision-making around the professional developments because there's no reason to have increased professional development if it isn't what is really needed and quality that teachers have. We've been working on some professional development and training trainers around classroom management and managing a great classroom, but we can't seem to get anywhere to get motion around that so that it can be expanded beyond preschool and kindergarten. We need it K to 12. We have 1,285 new teachers in this district that need help. I do think that some of the expansion that this district is doing is great. Clifton was a great decision for the city center of our city. It was absolutely needed. There wasn't a neighborhood school for miles and miles and miles. I think the West Side Montessori is muchly needed. But as far as, and I think the Seven Bell Day is great, but that needs additional teachers. Schools went on the Seven Bell Day this year without the additional teachers, and encore classes had 40 kids in them. Companion classes are great, but that needs additional staffing to have the companion classes. It cannot just be done on a teacher's planning bell because that is an additional prep. The seven-hour day, what we're hearing, we have not had, like, overall conversations on what that looks like. But it is clearly defined how that structure is, and we can look at schools where it's successful. But to not communicate that to the schools, just say, "You're having a Seven Bell Day." They don't even have bells that are equal. They have bells that are 30 minutes, 50 minutes, 45 minutes, all in one school day. They have split lunch bells. So what we really need to do if we're going to improve this district is really get down to the basics of education, of what is appropriate and what is proper, and not say, "We can't do that because it can be done." I absolutely agree that career-based must be increased, career tech must be increased in this district. But we need to be active, the district needs to be actively working with the local unions to align our programs with union apprenticeship programs and the trades and in all of the different electrical, plumbing, all of that. Because, and they want that. There are kids in Cincinnati who are being left behind because the kids in the suburbs can go to the Oaks and get that. Our kids are not getting that. And AFL-CIO trades would love to get in and help to make sure that those kids can be successful when they go into an apprenticeship program post-graduation. CFT's been working on a teacher pipeline project, but we don't know really where that is going. But it needs to make sure that there is a teacher involved with that program. And in order to seek educational excellence, the district needs to include teacher leadership to assist with the planning of school culture across the district. This cannot be done top-down. It looked to me like most of the additional expenses were administrative, and to add another layer of administration is not what is going to improve what happens frontline. And it just seemed to me that, and that's what, every time there's a new position created, people contact me, "Why are they adding more administrators? We need more teachers." So I hope that as we are moving forward, we really think about, "How is this filtering down to the classroom level?" And I did, I loved what Erica had to say about making sure that there's mental health supports in all schools, that all children have access to that, not just the kids who are on certain types of healthcare, because it is a crisis in this city. So I just want to say that I'm glad we're moving forward. I think we're making a lot of decisions, but I think that we need to have more teacher input on how that is going to look across the district. So thank you.
President Jones, if I could, I feel compelled to respond to some of these.
Okay. Thank you.
So in terms of the, but...
Did you want...
No, I just want to be able to respond to, be able to give some information.
Go ahead.
Not only for the board, but also for the public. In terms of the budget process for this year, what has happened in the last several years is the staff that has been in place in the schools have just been allowed to roll over. So we have instances of schools who were, quite honestly, overstaffed. There are some schools you could go to where you'd have below 12, 13 to 14, 12 kids in a classroom. So what we decided to do was to, quite honestly, go through every single budget and look at the staffing calculations outlined in the CBA to right-size the staffs. In terms of overload, I think it's important for everyone to know that overload happens at the primary level at the moment the 19th child comes. So primary classrooms are staffed at 18 kids to one teacher. When the 19th kid shows up, one more kid, then it's considered to be an overload status. When the 26th child comes, that's when the teacher, that's when the school gets another teacher. In some instances, in many instances, the teachers choose the overload as opposed to getting the extra personnel or support. In terms of input around professional development, this year, we put in place a education, an education task force made up of teachers at the elementary and high school level to inform the decisions as it relates to the district initiatives that are related to teaching and learning, professional development, testing. We also have curriculum council that meets on a monthly basis with our curriculum team. They give input. Then there's a steering committee that meets. There's interdisciplinary committee, then there's a sitting steering committee meeting. And then President Sellers and I both co-chair the Educational Initiatives Panel, which many of these things are discussed during those times. And so there are many systems that are put in place to gather the input of our teachers and our teaching staff. In addition, I think it would be remiss of me not to say that Treasurer Wagner meets with President Sellers on a regular basis where these items could be addressed and brought up, and problems could be solved in that manner.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. Okay, we're going to move forward with the next item on the agenda, which is the report from our superintendent.
Yes, I have two very exciting things to mention. So first of all, on Monday, many of our students were able to participate in something fun and exciting their first day back of school, and that was the Reds Parade. So CPS was represented, and it was very nice to see our kids in the parade. We have some kids, some little ones from Leap Academy as well as Roberts. We have some high schools who participated in it as well. So it was a good time to have the city come together around something positive and uplifting. In addition, on April the 11th at 9:30 at Taft High School, there will be a press conference to announce the Cyber Security Academy that has launched this year. So we're very excited about that and invite everyone to be able to attend. Again, that is April the 11th at 9:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent.
Sub move, second.
Any discussion? Ms. Torrick, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Report from the treasurer, Ms. Torrick.
She has attached the documents for approval, so purchase orders, payments to vendors, community reinvestment agreements, and donations.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Sub move, second.
Did you second, Ms. Marowski?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Torrick, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
I've been told that I, the minutes weren't approved.
Yes, they were.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Okay. All righty. Are there any inquiries or updates? Ms. Bolton?
I have one update, and it's sort of an announcement. We've announced it before, and it's important. District has been working on it, as well as the cross-boundary leadership team from the Community Learning Center folks. And that is on the 17th of April, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the Community Action Agency, there will be a presentation and input opportunity. And last time, a couple hundred people showed up, and I think the cross-boundary leadership is organizing folks to make sure we're almost at every table to have an impact. But it is about the strategic plan from the state of Ohio regarding the implementation of ESSA at the state level. And there are, and we can send to folks the draft from which the discussion will take place, as well as the questions that are already being sent out to folks. But it's important that CPS be represented since we're the largest within the Southwest area. But that's six to eight at the Community Action Agency. You can pre-register, but I don't think it limits who gets to be there. I think it just, you know, you just, I don't know, you get a ticket or something. I don't know what the purpose is, but to show up would be important. And, and again, kudos, I should have said kudos to all the people that have been working on this for over a year, because if you will all recall, the, the state proposal that was initially made, that was going to the, to Washington, was not good for us. And these folks and CFT and all those folks gathered together to help rewrite it for the state, and now it, it almost reads like a CPS manual, which is great.
Thank you. Repeat the date again?
April 17th, six to eight, Community Action Agency.
Thank you.
Walk around back to get in.
Other inquiries and updates? I, I just want to remind board members that we have an upcoming ACES meeting, which it was so close, the tentative date was so close to our last meeting. We talked about pushing it back a little bit, so we're looking at two dates in May. One is Wednesday, May the 2nd, and one is Tuesday, May the 8th. The only suggested change in that is that Mr. Sittenfield is asking if we can meet in a school in the evening. So those are the two dates. And you may have gotten an email on this, and so the times are just slightly changed in that they are requesting to do it in the evening. So I would appreciate if, if folks would respond, or if you want to let me know now we can get it done, as I know folks' calendars get filled very quickly. So I did get one response. Ms. Bolton, I have yours.
Well, if it's the evening, you may not have gotten it. Because the evening means that those are two Reds games.
Okay. Well, can we, is it possible if we put, we want people to, can you respond to doodles? Would that, it, I'll, I'll ask, what'd you say?
I thought we did already.
Yeah, I did respond to-
What, to a doodle or an email?
Something about ACES.
Okay, okay.
But I didn't realize it was the evening.
Yes, that was a change. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Oh, okay, good. Well, I responded, I could.
It was a change.
But that was before I knew it was the evening.
Okay, so-
No.
What we'll do, oh, you said no. So what I'll do is put out, we want to do a doodle. If you can make those days in the evening, then we'll go with one of those days. Okay? All right. Thank you. Any assignments? I'll just jump out there. Once we get a date, I'm going to ask Superintendent Mitchell to follow through with solidifying a place in the evening. I would suggest, I would suggest somewhere downtown, just because it's convenient. The problem with that may be it's the, at the end of the day, traffic downtown, but we can consider that.
Was there interest, was there a particular reason the council wanted to meet at a school? Was there some?
There was a particular reason, and I don't have the, the notes, so I can't remember off the top of my head, but yes.
So that would maybe indicate which school?
He just thought it was a good idea if we had an open public meeting, but, but also there were some suggested changes to the agenda, and, and some of it had to do with things that we have been talking about in, in terms of FCC planning and that kind of thing, but, you know, that also has to be confirmed or reaffirmed, reconfirmed. All right. All right. Any other assignments? Ms. Bolton?
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's an assignment, but we all had some other ideas regarding the budget piece. Didn't know if the superintendent could give us an idea. Should we individually submit to you? Should we send it to Ms. Davis and then have it be submitted? Or our questions or comments or additions, or can we just send them directly to you?
Yes, that's fine, then we'll compile them and be able to get a response and make some adjustments.
Okay, so we're going to forward questions and comments to the superintendent. Okay. Having no other business, before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned. And board, there's food, people, it's hot.
Meal of the day.
I've been waiting all afternoon, I was like-
That is a Leo, yeah.
It was only two hours, so I think that is a weird-
I'm, I'm thrilled. Well, no, we're two hours on the button. That's exactly the time I budgeted, so I was like-